I want to acknowledge and thank Mayor Davis who is here, Councilor Chung, Councilor Toomey, Vice Mayor Simmons, and Councilor Gaudiusi who are here. And I don't know, I was just gonna say I saw Councilor Chung, but I just said Councilor Chung, so maybe two or three times. I want to welcome you all. I'm gonna just quickly read the call of the meeting of the ordinance to make it a public hearing to discuss a zoning petition for Michael Phillips requesting the city council to amend the zoning ordinance to Special District Two, which is referred to as SD Two, zoning district in North Cambridge. I want to just remind folks that the meeting is being televised. There's a site chief right here, Mr. Tiegus, waving him here, Charlie. And so we will have a presentation. Michael is gonna give a presentation that is gonna take fifteen to twenty minutes, and the council will ask a few questions, and then we will open it up to public comment at that time. So with that, we're gonna ask Michael to step up to the table and introduce the petition to the council.
How's that? Hello? Thank you, Councilor Marr. My name is Michael Phillips, and I'm a resident of fifty-seven Manson Avenue.
Okay, Michael, I'm sorry, just before we go any further, just so everyone understands this, that any group of ten citizens can file a zoning petition. So this district was looked at by a council who took action on this, Madam Clerk, in two thousand and...
March fifth, two thousand and twelve, Councilor.
Okay. And we have some refinements that are in this petition that Michael is lending his name to the petition. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Councilor. I'll go ahead and get started here. The objective here is to make a great neighborhood even better. And we'll talk about why we need refinements, and why we're worth looking at again, and we'll go through all these things. I respect that the council has put a lot of work on this topic in the past, but we have to rehash everything in lay in detail, and try to move along fairly quickly. Feel free in that vein to slow me down if I'm going too quickly or if you have questions to make. There are copies of the slides at your desk. I'm gonna be doing the summary. I'm gonna talk about our neighborhood, what the problem is, remind everyone of the tremendous support we got last time, and try to justify why we're worth a second look. The next six bullets here are the things the petition tries to address. I'll lay these issues out, we'll talk about the text of the petition that tries to solve or mitigate the case. You'll be left with a menu of issues to choose from, and some nots to try and choose. The biggest point, the first point, are relentless buildings. The key element is this problem of embedding a big box building in it in our neighborhood. We'll explore the current zoning language and how the Bay Area not protect us from this, or, as we saw last week, as the planning board did not protect us from this. Second item, very important, the linear park is a feat of design and engineering, and very special, and talk about protecting that as well. These first petitions are basically universal to everyone in the neighborhood. The last few are also quite important, to different degrees, to different people. Traffic safety and access. This is a game where the only way to win is not to play, but we need to talk about this topic. The community government, I'll provide a status update on this, and some zoning language that hopes to incentivize the landlord to do something that we'd like to see them do, which is transfer to the city. We'll talk about Devonations Dance Studios being an important community institution worth saving. The petition makes some suggestions, as much as it can, not really the right way to do it, but we'll see what we can help with. And finally, we'll talk about rounding up the order of William Moore and William with one or two zoning homes, as in the last session, Councilor Seidel and Mayor Marr have seen this. So for context, we're Special District Two, which is part of the linear park. This is some formerly industrial area. So in the picture here, we have the green is the linear park, the red area on the other side is Special District Two. The pink area here along Mass Ave is Business District, where you expect to have retail and desert construction. And out to the west, we have W. Grace and Special District Three. Just to highlight this here, the fossil oil properties are essential to this conversation today. They are highlighted in orange, and there's an outline showing where SD Two is. SD Two actually have both sides of the linear park, although the areas are very different. So a sort of political context then, to try to start to address this serial zoning issue. Back in two thousand and eleven, wow, that's two years ago, the situation we had was four properties with redevelopment proposals with land in Special District Two. This was kind of a battle on three fronts for us. We had the J. H. Emerson warehouse, Cambridge Lumber Properties, and Fossil Oil. In response to that at the time, some of my neighbors filed a bishop petition. This had the effect, at least indirectly, of combining the planning board's pressure to shrink Cambridge Lumber. They voluntarily complied with the bishop petition before it was passed. The fossil situation was much trickier. Now, I was not actually a proponent of the bishop petition, which I have to confess to here. I had sort of, I didn't make naive that we could negotiate in some other fashion. That didn't really work out. So I don't have a completely clear view of what occurred. I do know, though, that the councilors did a really good job of just realizing to our needs. They all came and took tours, they challenged the fossils in various ways. Councilor Marr has every time sent a paper letter to everyone in the neighborhood, who was working on negotiations with Councilor Dr. Gary Chung, and planning the venue was dangerous because I know you all help, so I apologize, and thanks for that. And Councilor Dr. Gaudiusi actually came to do a tour, even though she would love to see the councilor again. There you go. All right. Excuse me. But the point is that the councilors kept their word, they were very supportive. When things wouldn't work out, they passed that petition. That petition looked exclusively at the density, which is to say, how much square footage you can have per area, how many units you can have per area. So again, serial zoning, why am I here? Didn't the area fix this? Yeah, we also do. It turns out zoning is hard. What we have in these situations are citizens, often in a state of panic, and so as that was the case with myself, trying to get in the air in response to a planning board filing or plans that are being thought about, so that the council has the legal ability to help us. There are some timing issues there. It's very easy to misspace. I'm a software engineer, I'm not a land use lawyer. A lot of the way zoning works is actually defined through case law, which even so, if you can read the ordinance and the state laws, you're not able to full picture. It's very, actually, a very emotional and difficult process for us to be part of, to figure out how to cope and get your results, but also be part of the solution, not just to be complaining, but to be contributing positively. One thing we got, we stopped on, is according to the ordinance, the purpose of this district is to encourage the establishment of residential uses in the district in a form of density compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood. And this is basically where we went when I, and where we disagreed with the planning board. We sort of read this as, well, you know, for density, well, the Mohawk form, density is in pretty good shape. We sort of expected that the proposal we would seek from applicants would be at least close to the scale of the existing neighborhood, maybe not necessarily exactly one or two families, although there are lots of people who would love to see that, but, you know, close. And so when we saw a proposal come through that didn't have that quality, it was a large box building, we're thinking, well, apparently we misread something, or we misunderstood something, thought about something here. So we thought we're okay. There are also other landlines in the ordinance, and the way the building inspector will interpret these rules, the one notable here is that you could actually have a linear park be your side yard. So that indeed, they required a seven and a half foot setback. The original fossil proposal said they had a twelve foot setback, which is the space between the building and the linear park. I'm happy to say that they had increased that to over twenty-five feet, which is what the petition asks for, so I can say agree also at that point. Fundamentally, we want to avoid going to court, although this being North Cambridge, and the permit had been passed last night, I don't know what to say about that. But we'd really like to see that your will is clear and known, and is what actually happens in construction. And one of the things we'll test, hopefully, with this petition is whether or not the big box idea is what you had in mind for our neighborhood. There are other issues we'll talk about, there are lots of things that are relevant and complicated here, and this petition has something which may be controversial, which is that it actually tries to incentivize the developer through small upside proposals to do particular things, and we'll talk about that. The idea there is, it doesn't have to all be, you know, beating them down, we can in fact work with property owners. But no matter if why am I here, why do I live in the city of Cambridge? I came here for school, like lots of other people. I didn't really plan to necessarily stay. I graduated, and I was like, no, you know, Cambridge's got the, let me find a apartment near the Red Line. To me, Cambridge and Summer Hill were the same, they were just near the Red Line. But then, you know, imagine a thing happened. I lived in Cambridge, I got married, I started really to put down a bit of associations, and as I moved between a couple rental properties, I said, this is an amazing place. I bought a house, I was actually looking for a condo, and I happened to find a, excuse me, a, basically a condo, in turn, it'd be a small house, people of one family on a half-size lot, very small to the district, and now I'm thinking, geez, maybe I should raise my children here. Originally, the plan was, you know, be out of school, be a professional, do whatever, get married, have kids, go to the suburbs, because that's what you do. And suddenly, I was starting to see that maybe there were alternatives, and obviously, that's one of the reasons why I would, you know, put the effort into defending something like this. Also, it's a great neighborhood, in particular this area. One is in Cambridge, arguably one of the best cities on the planet. It's in North Cambridge, which has got a very good history, Tim O'Neill, a lot of very interesting worker history stories from this area. We have the linear park. I don't think I can say enough things that are good about the linear park. The city staff who helped design this in nineteen eighty-five, they won an award, actually the governor's award, design award, because of just how incredible it is. And some people think of it as just a blind path, but they sort of miss the idea. It's actually a suburb illusion. When you're on a path, which is wider, it just tends to be a piece of asphalt for your bicycle, you are, you almost lose yourself from it. You don't almost realize you are in this urban environment. And so that's a sense of tranquility that's really hard to get in a city, it's quite lovely. And so, you know, people may wonder why we're so excited with the linear park, or we worry about it so much, and it's things like that. There are other institutions that are really incredible here, or at least, you know, maybe I'll speak about it in the past tense, but William Moore Ave Community Government, which abuts my home, or abutted my home, anyway, that was amazing, meant to have an area where children and their families become a good gardening, again, an urban garden. And I know the city is permitted open space and community gardens, and so I'm not fault of the city here of all, but it is one of those things that made the neighborhood really amazing, and so its loss will be felt. Similarly, the dance studio, you know, is an amazing concept for me. My youngest daughter just recently started going there. This is the Devon Racing School of Dance, which hosts the Cambridge Youth Dance Program, which actually helps visit young youths, get into dance. The spaces which run are amazing, for example, like the North Cambridge Family Opera. So I have no qualms with the fossils wanting to redevelop the area, and thus, we have to find a way to relocate the studio. But again, on balance, it's something which made the neighborhood very interesting indeed, and is at risk. But fundamentally, at the very bottom, it's the people in the neighborhood. People stay here, they, I'm a newcomer, I've lived here for eight years, and people who have lived here for more than twice my lifespan, they've been in Cambridge. And it's great. So the only thing that's essentially a problem is these old industrial uses that we hope to see convert to residential use. So the linear park, just have a couple photos, just to remind people how amazing it is, the Devon Racing School of Dance, new institutions like the Marino's Clinic, which is on Mass Ave, the Court of Evidence in Mass Ave, and is a neighborhood institution. Some people might call the New W. Jones a neighborhood institution as well, I'm more of a verminist person myself, but, you know, we could either way do that. But it's very interesting neighborhood. And so we talked about redeveloping these industrial uses, this is such an opportunity. The road is gone, it's been gone for quite some time now, and at that point, really, the rules all changed. We should be, we want a residential, it should be integrated with the fabric of the community around it. Now, bringing the residential is great, we're definitely pro-development here, in that we're gonna add to our community, more people can experience how wonderful this neighborhood is. We'll have support for retail on the avenue, and, you know, we should get some, we'll get some safety and accessibility upgrades. You know, maybe I can get to the bike path in there without stumbling upon a drug bill, as I did the other week. There'll be less asphalt, we'll have better environmental quality. So to have this opportunity before us, the fossils want to redevelop, right, like on one redevelopment, SD Two is incredible, and we should embrace that. It's an opportunity that is being squandered in this case, with a huge building, which really, I think, ruins the linear park illusion. It's not actually getting from view, there have been a lot of arguments about the particular design being as, and I believe it is as clever as the architect can come up with, Mr. Roy 's also been very gifted, but he's operating under essentially faulty constraints, and is being hamstrung and everywhere. It's not really getting from view, and we really want more families and livelihoods. We don't want to encourage high turnover, and this is not a story against renters, and we are clear about that. We have lots of renters here, more than half a day for that, I would imagine. It's all about whether or not people stay. And developments like big boxes, like the Cambridge Park Drive, and their fixes, I think, risk, or at least statistically, would have a higher percentage of turnover, and we want to be careful about that. I think, you know, something like town housing would be amazing in this neighborhood, I think it's worth it, really worth it, Corin Stowe, the other side of the park. And, you know, on a personal note, we're not an idiot, we don't want to be viewed as an income stream for somebody else. We want to think about community, bringing in new people and to be our neighbors. On the point of there being lots of rentals going on, this is a development map, which is, you guys have a hand of, it's not provided, is showing each one of these little circles is a development which in the last few years have been done, or is in progress, or proposed. And there's a circle here, centered, we actually determined on Jerry's Pit, about seven tenths of mile in the radius, where there are, oh, let's see, fifteen hundred new rental units coming online. That's a lot of that one kind of development in North Cambridge, and I think there should be a balance, maybe that works a certain location better than others. We want, I think from a planning perspective, the council should consider how it wants all the new housing that we're bringing online to appear and function. So looking at SD Two, what's possible under the existing zoning, we got something like this, almost like, I'll cite Cambridge Lumber as an example, townhouses, you know, that's a 3D building, it almost looks kind of big actually, but imagine a 57D building. And, you know, screened from the park, and there are three townhouses, quite reasonable, I would say. We can also get a big box. Now, I don't have the greatest credentials on this, because we do not have any 3D models provided by the proponent. On the top here, we see the 260-foot-long view on the linear park. Now, to be fair, this is the bottom version, that is sort of hugging the...
Mike, you're blocking this projector with your arm.
Thank you, thank you, John. It is sort of hugging the park, and we want people to love the park, and we don't love the park like this. This is a drawing that, I guess it's a 3D drawing, part of the, this is half of the north face of the building that's proposed. And this is a citizen-generated 3D model of the original proposal. There have been a couple changes since then, this has ten extra units, so actually, it's about ten feet further from the park, and on the Conde Park Ave side, there's a step down right there on that side, just to be clear, but still, it's rather large, and you try to place it in the neighborhood, embedded here in Google Earth, you can sort of see, relative to the other buildings here, even warehouses, it is large, okay. All right, so our goals today, of this petition, the big two items, smaller buildings. This whole line of establishment of residential uses in a form and density compatible with a residential neighborhood. It appears we need to clarify how one would accomplish that, in terms of defining what form means, so we'll talk about maybe limits on how many units could be in a single building. Second item is respectable linear park illusion, a setback that's greater than what is possible now, which I believe not to be controversial particularly, but in general, this also means less mass along the park, as continuous unbroken face. There are other also important items that I can't kind of address in absolute every one of them, but the other four that are here in the text. We talked about traffic issues and the possibility of closing Conde Park Avenue. Second item is encourage state and community government, this is not a request for end of taking, this is more an encouragement to provide incentive to developer that it would be financially expeditious for him to do so. The third item is round another corner, Madison and Boone, one or two family homes, not controversial. And the last item is allow the zoning to have a new dance studio, just again, if everyone decides that's what they want to do. Currently, you cannot do that at the current center. So you may wonder, you know, is this just one crazy guy who's upset that he doesn't have a great space around his house anymore, or is this the real deal? There have been hundreds of people signing petitions, answering surveys, emailing and speaking. When, excuse me, when the garden was up for sale, two years ago now, I believe in January, my wife and a few of her friends found out from Mr. Fossis, you know, this was going on, that it was available, and we, she contacted Mayor Davis, who's a council in the previous term, and it was ordered through to have the city really look at buying a lot, and the city manager agreed this was consistent with what the city wanted to do with open space, and the process even started. We'll get into that more when I get to the garden, but that was two hundred people in a couple, in a couple hours' work on one weekend, who were just excited to participate. Recently, some neighbors of mine had another petition that went around, that, you know, talked about these issues, with one exception, about, you know, having smaller buildings, respecting the park, worrying about traffic, things like that, not the exact facts here, but the same thematic elements, especially the big building issue. And again, two hundred and fifty signatures in a weekend. PCK, go to door to door, people are home, they're engaging, they're very interested, they're enthusiastic, passionate, hardworking people. And you have to wonder, how come so many people care so much about something? And it's because our neighborhood is awesome, and our city is awesome, so that's basically what I come to them to. And who are these people, how many are there? In the neighborhood here, we have Mass Ave going up here, and White River Park going up. The red area, which is sort of this William Moore triangle of sorts, all the way down to Tyler Court, has about six hundred and seventy residents that are sort of like around zero, about a thousand, they've signed Mass Ave, and then below Harper Street, to William Moore Park, there's nine hundred and twenty-two in that red area, and almost nine hundred in the yellow area below, so there are a lot of people around here who have a lot of interest in this. You know, you're talking about a hundred million dollars, which a property people own, and one thing that's interesting to note in this red zone, you know, the zoning says residency to families, and although it's been up for case ever, in reality, that's what it is on average. The median FAR is above point five-five or so, right to CTE, which, and the regulations require point five for a single lot, and the average number of tenants is two, you know, one, two, and three. So, you know, we use those terms interchangeably, I think, with a very reason. All right, so the details with this proposal, we'll go through, I'll reference the actual, you know, ordinance section number, which usually refers to the paper in front of you if you're interested, but the big one is no big boxes. Rather than eliminating multi-family altogether, which there's actually a lot of support for, I'm suggesting that we do a maximum of three or four units per building. That's three if it's a straight multi-family, like a structural deck or a apartment building, which is something that Cambridge Lumber included. We can afford if you go townhouse by. This is more than what Cambridge Lumber needed to get their apartment off the ground and to be financially feasible, but, you know, I'm making allowance here to try not to hear two scripts. I'm not throwing out multi-family entirely, although that, you know, would be a big noise. But there are other issues to balance. This, second item, linear park setback, twenty-five feet always, this is the same as a rear setback in that district, which is what we thought it was in the first place. I don't think this is particularly controversial, the fossil plan is to do this already now. And then we get to the crazy stuff, traffic and access. So I have a map here of the neighborhood, it says Panamania View, and I think what I'd like to actually is switch to the board for a second. CTE was tight enough to lend me this board. My lovely assistant will help out. Okay, so we have here a picture of this going on, and, you know, there are, and we'll turn around for Councilor Marr as well, but the issue of traffic in this neighborhood is pretty insurmountable, a lot of it are regional issues. We have cut-throughs all the time on William Moore's side, we have crazy spaghetti land in the roads over here we have to worry about, and, you know, a lot of the stuff, I think, maybe is sort of out of scope, because, you know what, you're just, just don't drive, is sort of the answer that we get, you're sort of stuck in your driveways, and so it's hard to really address that. Maybe just put on this one over there, I don't know if I keep referring to. But we're gonna look in particular at the east end of the project, we have Conde Park Ave, Enden Street, and Tyler Court. All three of these properties touch the orange of fossil oil here, and in practice today, they're used as if they were connected with public ways. People will come down to Conde Park Ave and scoot over to the garage down here, the bottom which may fall forty, and garbage trucks will sort of get stuck on the corner here, trying to go around here. So it's not really optimal, and so some of the language I like to sort of talk about is context. The first one is no cut-throughs for William Moore Ave to Tyler Court End, and traffic parking agrees with that whole hardly, so there's sort of no harm in codifying it. I'm gonna suggest closing Conde Park Avenue to traffic, and I'm gonna give my reasons, and we probably will have an exciting discussion about this, but, and a bit of history, so workers here in Conde Park Ave both touched a fossil oil property, and both have involved lawsuits where fossils sued the city and trying to get access, and it is, I guess, perhaps a strange term for that, for people who are not aware of what's going on, on the worker's side, it was a building that burned down and had scurved disappear, not casting explosions or anything, but a judge decided that that meant there was no access, just given, you know, actual action to be taken. Conde Park Ave was a problem for traffic, for trucks, so the city actually purchased land to extend Tyler Court, and then closed Conde Park Ave, only to find out later that they didn't have the authority to do that, and had to open it up again. And the issue with Conde Park Ave today, apart from, you know, missing out and having it closed for nineteen years, is that limiting a lot of the traffic from the Emerson project, or more than, I think, doubling the amount of people who live on that street. And there's a crazy dog leg that makes navigating that pretty tricky, and people are kind of fear. So, you know, again, perhaps naively, I was hoping that with Conde Park Ave being closed, like workers here, might heal a wound that has sort of affected the neighborhood for some time, this sort of inequitable outcome from those losses. According to the traffic study, most of the traffic is predicted to use Tyler or William Moore, being that if you're going west, you're going to William Moore, if you're going east, you're going to Tyler, and those are part of the places you're coming from as well. So I made a modest proposal that, you know, really need it, and shipping that traffic to Tyler is not, is not getting the world that's worth it. Now, if there are more creative solutions that we can use, like the great, I talked about transferring development wise to make streets, so if you ask a landlord to make more streets to connect things with bigger terms, so that maybe makes them have these townhouses for park roads to get to, I was afraid that that might be onerous, and so there's incentive, let's just transfer those, that's for footage that you could have built if you didn't have a road onto your project. I don't know if that's necessary, because traffic parking is demanding these connections anyway, so that's why the issue we want to think about, but again, in the spirit of balancing out some of the things that we are reducing, this was an idea that I had. We are, perhaps, the community government. So as I said before, Mayor Davis had an order to try to buy it, and I think this was starting to go pretty well, Fossis amended it, selling it, he's getting good value according to the appraisal the city had done, I think at one point of a billion or something like that. Soil tests have been requested by the city, showed high levels of arsenic, so it turns out that this facility that's been used for two or three decades or longer by people in a communal sense, has bad soil that shouldn't be, hazard-wise, the conservative report from Don Bala, the people looking into that, say that unless you're being a lot of soil, or you only eat vegetables that didn't wash into that, get from that place, there's your only source of vegetables for five years or more, maybe you have a problem. So it's enough to require cleanup, maybe not enough to be super hazard, and I am comfortable with how the fossils are handling the cleanup, they fenced it off, they're getting close to get a... They fenced it off, they're getting close to getting a cleanup, that's great. But what I'm not comfortable with is that, having given this pause, Rob Fosse Jr. put out one exclusively, the oldest son of the family, he's thinking about other things he could do with it. In fact, it's been subdivided. This is a file with the registered keys. So on here, on the right side is Woodbury Street, we have Whittamore in the bottom, and Madison on the left, and we have these three jigsaw puzzle pieces of lots, which is something they are entitled to do. It does seem kind of strange though. So the language here talks about, this is, I apologize, the most complicated part of the petition, and do you understand that any place, there's text in any language whatsoever, I copied it from someplace else, and they get the zoning ordinance and pattern match because apparently it was good enough at some point in the past, so it's still good now. So, and I can actually, I think this language came from the Most Houston Foresee amendment, but definitely isn't donating public open spaces to the city. And in exchange for that, you get to transfer development-wise, which means that the square footage and units would have built there, you can build someplace else in the moment as well, in this case, in Special District Two. Now, I have also on top of that a modest bonus to incentivize them actually doing this, which may or may not be necessary, we can discuss that. And the way it works is transfers GFA is for three-quarters of FAR, you get an extra unit for 1,500 square feet transferred. So what does all that mean? If you transfer the current garden, which is 13,000 nine and a half square feet, then you would get six units and a comparable NFR. The current waste on the garden, the owner can build four units, and we have it over here in the model. So if we take this, put it someplace else, if we close Cottage Park Ave, put it here, there we go. Problem solved with that, I'm a city planning, okay, it's not going. But that's the concept of it here. Now, to a lot of possibility, I didn't say it had to be the garden proper that was donated, it could be something nearby, it could be a subset of it, it could be like all the furniture along Whittamore on that side, it could be something on the opposite side, but if it's right in that area, there's a lot that's being donated. Actually, and I think the wording was that the parking lot at Edmond's, and the bottom of Cottage Park Ave would also be qualified technically. And I have this condition of a given contractor will leave the lot size, so we don't get puzzle piece weirdness, where like, they all kind of had some leftovers, and we're going to get scraps as a garden wants to take a little more serious about that. Okay, and finally, around another corner, no multifamily use within 100 feet of Whittamore Avenue. And this is consistent with both of the Fosse's illustrations have shown, and like I said, the council with Mayor Mar had suggested last time on the mission. And that's to say, one or two family homes along those lots. Fosse's filed a subdivision plan, but those are three lots, they're being individually sold. The only catch is, if one person bought all three lots, they can go ahead and put a six to it, re-invest it in an inclusionary multifamily building of some sort there, which I think is not consistent with the vision, the planning vision we seem to have in this neighborhood. Six arts and crafts studios. Currently, the zoning allows arts and crafts studios on the dance studio in existing buildings. I have a line that says, do any of those. And maybe this is a long shot to help Fosse to support the institution. Only if everyone involved thought it was a good idea for you to do this. I personally think across the street from me, next to the yard race would be great, because then you have the step down. You go from a big industrial to a smaller dance studio, you have the New York Park access, and then you sort of continue on to the rest of the neighborhood. But, you know, as I decide, the real problem here is not necessarily something that can address here, we need to find that institution, for a dance studio, a new home. I'd love to be able to Cambridge. If any of you have wealthy developer friends who can do a project on, say, Mass Ave, looking for a first-floor commercial activity, you are caught, because there might be amendments to that. And the seventh and final point, to the minor item, I add Special District Two to the list of areas of special concern. This just means that if you're doing something in Special District Two that does not require planning or review, and that creates a public CDU review process, it doesn't dent a whole lot of teeth, but it at least gets some public eyes on it, and often can make, you know, quite useful customizations to it. Okay, so, I need to talk about something important, which is the criticism I'm going to get, and that I've already gotten about this proposal. There's no reason for me to hide these things, we should just talk about it now, we had a moment. So first item, the cereal zone. We did this already, we visited this before. Why initial refinements? I would say that it's worth it. Zoning is hard business to manage, and has surprising effects. So while we thought perhaps that vision took care of things, the zoning was apparently oblivious. We're worth making exceptions before, this is a strong, connected community of all the Fosse's life, we're coming together, even amidst some differences at some of the points, to keep our neighborhood intact. Second item we always hear is response zoning. Nope. My argument here is that this is largely overplayed, according to CDD staff I've talked to. As long as there is an open public process, and there is public benefit, and all the rules are followed, then this is consistent with the zoning power of the municipality hats. In fact, this sort of, you know, single-owner, large parcel zoning amendment type stuff happens all the time, admittedly it's usually put forth by the owner, but we do see it in both directions. And I believe that the Law Department memo on the mission petition, which this committee requested, sums this up nicely, and that the city could do this sort of change, and be protected for litigation. Third item, incentives are too generous. I'm not sure. Partially, it's because I'm trying to be balanced and even-minded, and not demonize the developers. Maybe the road incentives are necessary, because traffic parking would demand that anyway. I think the garden bonus on top of the transfer is reasonable, if people thought that just a straight transfer was more appropriate, then so be it. What I struggle to do here is not to be quite so subtractive in what I propose, providing the possible balance. Next item is impact on other owners. I believe the impact on other owners is minimal, other property owners in SD Two. There are some buildings located within 25 feet of the New York Park, and I believe they are already in violation of their set acts, and so they are already grandfathered on performing uses. I would expect that the normal grandfathering clauses that exist in the ordinance are enough protection, if it turns out I'm wrong, and we hear otherwise, that we could perhaps entangle, maybe about setting a restriction on when the building was built, or something like that. Or even split Special District Two into two pieces. This is not without precedent, I'm led to believe. And the north piece of Special District Two and the south piece of Special District Two, although they have the bike path in common, and are former industrial sites, their dimensions and characteristics for access are very different. So there's something about that, perhaps. And then finally, and this is the biggest item, is this too restrictive in terms of what people will be able to build? So I hear that not having big boxes, that that limited land won't be possible. And I would respectfully disagree, and here's why. First off, I don't believe that truck storage would be the highest of best use, even under these conditions. Right now, a minimal amount of activity occurs in the site, just to sort of keep it open, I guess. They may have interest to store their trucks for their operation elsewhere. Looking at Cambridge Lumber, I see that it's totally not even feasible, because they're doing it. They're, you know, acting a bank at this point, they're doing construction, proof right there. Just because the property owner who's most affected here doesn't want to sell off the E-bills, he wants us to be a revenue stream, doesn't mean that that's a good enough reason. They can still make tons of money, pay for their kids' college tuition several times over, just like the Cambridge older developers is able to do currently. Surely they have to take their millions of dollars and bring it to someplace else, which could be a convenience. I would recommend something along Mass Ave, maybe the dance studio and some residential stuff above it. There are lots of opportunities for that style of development there. Or if Cambridge Park Drive has any space left, and Rich McKinnon will look for more money, they can dump it in there. Or maybe they can put it into oil futures, I'm not really sure. But the point is, you know, this area can be developed economically in a way that's possible and lucrative for developer, even if it's not their preferred way of doing it. And when I close this part with an end, and I'm sure I will get a phone call about this, but on Monday, the Fosse's hosted neighbors to discuss their plans, and that was, I would say, a frank and honest exchange of ideas. One of the things that Rob Jr. mentioned was how happy we should all be, and our property values are going up, which means we should all be happy that we're wealthy in some way, if we sell, leave, leave the neighborhood. He went on to comment that there's a property on Murphy Street listing for 900K, and get one or two family districts. And there are two units nearby that just sold recently for the 700,000 range. These are also one or two family districts. He said he's getting very high offers on the land they're trying to sell. It's such a hot commodity, these single lots, we can't get them in Cambridge. We have somebody who's looking to build a single-family home on the Wood Street, and I think that's fabulous, I very much support that. There's a lot of interest in that sort of thing. He went on to discuss that he feels fortunate that he's failed and gave him the garden because of these high values, and is excited to see what he can do with it. I think, at that moment, I saw him blink, and I think his pupils turned to dollar signs. I might be wrong, I'm not sure. And thus, I discount economic arguments. And thus, I beep a lot, because, how do I... Let's wrap this up, I'll talk to them. But in some way, the neighborhood needs your help again. We don't want big box buildings that are of scale, we believe, and likely with our property respective. We have traffic saving concerns, low toward the curbs, the community of gardens to stick around. If there's, you know, any stone balls, a chance of a dance studio being preserved in some fashion to a degree, and should run out of that form. But the big question is for you, as a body to consider, does the council want to get lots here? Is this what was meant by getting compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, if that's the limit it comes down to? Can we have townhouses in something really appropriate in scale? This model here, which I can claim no credit for, like my internal neighbors who put this together, you know, does show a townhouse development, just a zoning sort of envelope, of the same gross floor area as has actually been proposed and approved last night. So I believe that there are options. You know, we'd like something more appropriate in scale. So, when we finish up, please, help us protect our neighborhood. Let's grow this, extend it in this area, embrace this land, this opportunity we have, and not have this big box island that people have to sort of get on and get off of. This is a huge opportunity for the neighborhood. We can do some really good stuff here. In fact, I would say that we can make a great neighborhood, even better, with your help in the next 20 days. Thank you.
The pleasure of the council, if there were no...
Mr. Chair, I had a question about the impact of the planning board's decision. I don't know if CDD can talk about that, or clerk in terms of timing, or...
I think that, Jeff, if you would like to, if you're playing one from the table, you
The planning board is scheduled to discuss this petition next week. As the opponent mentioned last night, they heard that their second hearing on the proposed Fosse Street development, and approved a special permit for that running.
Mr. Chair, if you're to, Mr. Deff, if they approve the special permit, what's going on next week?
They're agreeing, they filled the Phillips petition.
Oh, okay, so my question is, what does last night's approval have in terms of impact on the Phillips petition, or vice versa?
The Phillips petition is still active, their petition is subject to the Phillips petition.
So because it was filed before the decision, the Phillips petition, if passed, would govern the planning board's actions, and arguably make last night's decision invalid, or how's that work?
The, your question, it would affect the outcome of that decision, it doesn't govern the planning board's action, but it does affect that decision.
So the decision, how does it affect that decision if we were to pass the Phillips petition in some version?
Right, it would no longer be a valid, um, valid, um, special permit, at that point they'd have to conform to the whether the zoning is passed.
Okay, thanks. And then if, if this were to get refiled, if this, for whatever reason, if this petition is not acted on favorably during this particular filing cycle, then the impacts on last night's decision end?
That, I'd have to check, it would occur, it depends on the timing of your refiling, exactly how that's, that logistically is done, and perhaps, I might be able to ignite this, as in terms of that sequence, which has happened before.
If another petition is filed, or is an order to refile this petition before this one expires, it has the same effect?
So this petition, if refiled by the council, indefinitely, without being acted on, would still trump last night's decision if the word ever acted on favorably?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm not entirely sure that's the case. My understanding, and may require a reading from the Law Department, is that a refiled petition is still a new zoning petition, and as the, as the law states, the petition that has been referred and advertised then applies to, to a, to any building permits that are issued, with the presumption that the, that the, that that particular petition hold hearings, and then be under consideration by the city council. If that petition expires, then it no longer, it no longer applies to, to, to projects that are, or that may be subject to the petition. If the petition is refiled, that is effectively a new petition, that, that would then begin to apply to any building permits that are sought after that is, that petition's advertised.
So my understanding is that we can't extend the time limit on this to refiling?
Again, it may require a reading from the Law Department, but my understanding, based on the past application of, of the, of the laws they apply to zoning petitions under state rules, is that the petition that's under consideration, which has a expiration date on it, is the only petition that, that applies to any building permits that are being sought. Then if it's refiled, that's a sort of a new, a new window of time, that only applies to permits that are sought within that window of time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We should, that's my understanding as well, we should probably get clarification from the Law Department.
So on a motion by Councilman Kelly to ask for a legal opinion on that regarding the expiration, and whether an extension of the date would place the petition in jeopardy? On the motion...
Not quite that, but your extension of the date would take the planning board's decision on jeopardy.
Okay. On the motion, Councilman...
Can I support on that, a little while, if I'm able? And I'm not sure, Jeff, for student reasons, but how many times a same petition could be filed if each time is unsuccessful at one point? Because I believe we just did this about a year ago, so I'm just concerned if this one is not approved, and then goes back, just how many times would possibly a lot of the district, same petition can be refiled?
So you're really referring to the serial nature of this, so do you have that attitude? So on the motion, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, and the motion to request that information from the Law Department passed. Any further questions from the council before we turn to public comment?
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember, yes, go.
Thank you. So you mentioned, literally mentioned in the course of the narrative, that Cottage Park Ave is closed, I think you said 17 years, and then a court order opened it up. So I would like to have the clerk, I mean, the Law Department also let us know how, if we did decide to close it, whether that would be legally possible, and how we can do it.
Okay, so we will ask for information on the court order that referred to both, to Cottage Park. On that motion...
And I think that some of that answer might be in the court order that was given to us, but just to have the most relevant pieces taken out, and that specific question answered would be helpful.
On that motion, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, and the motion. On that motion, all those in favor say aye, those opposed no, and the motion. At this time, I think we're going to turn to public comment, and the first speaker is Paul Robinson. That's including it. So, okay. Julia Bishop.
I thought I was signing in.
We're going to ask people to give their name and address for the record and to hold their comments for three minutes.
Could I ask a clarifying question? Are we only speaking right now on the Phillips petition? I know there's another piece before the ordinance committee.
So, then there is one...
Isn't there another piece regarding petitions that were received? Is this part of the same issue, or we're just talking about the Phillips petition?
I mean, this is the only issue that we know that is before us. I'm not sure...
Counsel, Mark, you did have a petition given to us on Monday night that was included in tonight's meeting, and that might be what Ms. Bishop is referring to.
Okay, and I don't have that in front of me. So, it, I mean, look, we're not overly particular here. It is a public petition, but I think issues that are in the district are fine.
And I thought I was just signing on, I didn't plan to be here, I didn't plan to speak first, but I will go. Julia Bishop, on Cottage Park Act. Regarding the Phillips petition, I think there are some good items in there. I don't think our community would suffer by having a community garden. I do have some issues around inviting more traffic into the neighborhood, because I live on Cottage Park Act and we receive, brought up the dance studio traffic. And I think about ten years ago, actually requested that the faucets limit access because previous to that, people going to the dance studio were using vinyl core, and then the gates started opening up, and we do receive a lot of difficult traffic to the dance studio. I have no problem with the dance studio, I'm a dancer, I, I just don't, that traffic's been really hard to deal with in the neighborhood. Obviously, people at Cottage Park Act would appreciate any help with less traffic there, and in this petition that's shown as closing Cottage Park Act, so I do have a problem in that, because I, I think in the spirit of the neighborhood, we've been very active and looking for opening as many accesses to the project, not closing more down. So, even though it's my street and I would benefit by having no traffic, I, I think that's the wrong way to look at it. I think we need to look at having as much access to this project, given the size of it, and given the traffic concerns in the neighborhood. And smaller units, yes, I would agree with that. I think the neighborhood has been very clear on that, and when we were not hap, or I was not happy with the planning board's decision or interpretation that no one is going to see the big building behind the, where they placed it because of all the buffering that's happened, because one of the issues has been, it's not going to feel like a continuation of the neighborhood. So, I have a mixed, I'm in a mixed place about the overall petition. I think there's some good things. So, yeah, I'd like to just quickly speak to the other item I brought up, which are these petitions. You received a petition from residents of Brookford Street, and you received a petition signed by residents throughout the neighborhood. I want to refer you to Robert McGowan's letter to the ordinance committee. In a paragraph, he mentions that there was a petition that had many signatures on it. This is the one, fifth paragraph. There was a petition with many signatures on it. I was one of the people out spending my weekends finding those signatures that residents in our general neighborhood signed, and the intent was trying to reduce the size of the project, which that's true. And not, the petition was not necessarily to open Brookford Street, that was one of the items on the petition. We wanted setback from Linear Park, we wanted smaller buildings, we asked that thirty-three Cottage Park not be used as an address, because that's where all the traffic will go, and they have a one-time record address on that property, the faucet property. And I just want to assure you that Mr. McGowan's belief that this clause was thrown into the petition as a quick statement and that it may not have been understood by the majority of residents who signed the petition, that is absolutely incorrect. I spent two weekends, as did many of my neighbors on the other streets, and the handful of people that chose not to sign our petition did it based on the Brookford component. They were okay with Linear Park setback, they were okay with smaller buildings, and they were okay with limiting the use of Cottage Park Act. The people who signed this petition knew what Brookford Street opening it meant, and they signed it with that intent. It was not just thrown in there, and it was not somehow made invisible to the people who signed it. So, I just wanted to lend a little fact finding to this letter, because I was out there doing it, and we did have some people refused based on not wanting to see Brookford tampered with. But the people that signed it thought it was a reasonable, fair, and sane thing to do.
Julia, wrap some...
Thank you, thank you very much.
Eve Carr?
I thought I was just signing in.
Okay. If anyone thinks that just give us away, then that's perfectly fine. I think, is it Hayo Home?
I'll go by casting. Like just about everybody else here, I did think I was just signing in, but I'll take this chance to take, say a few words. I live at twenty-one Madison Ave. Before that, I actually lived on sixteen Kimball Street, so I've been in the neighborhood for about five years, like, and like Mike, I came, came to Cambridge for the schools, and I ended up staying. I married, bought, bought one of the condos, and we are in fact thinking about starting a family here, and I'm looking at this and going, Linear Park has been absolutely wonderful. And to have a gigantic building there, I mean, it looks like, they say that with all the trees and buffering, you might be able to hide it, but still, it would just change the feel of the neighborhood completely. And right now, it feels like a nice, it feels like the suburbs despite being in the middle of the city. I, I love this, this neighborhood. It does, it feels like, it has a small town feel. It's a feel I haven't seen in very many other neighborhoods. And I think the introduction of the giant, the faucet building the way it is now would completely destroy the feel of the neighborhood as we, as we currently have. And for, for the other point of the Phillips petition, some of them are already being followed, so I don't see, so I think the council should certainly approve those, since faucet is already following those, and it's not going to cause additional hardship to the faucets. And as for the rest, walking down Linear Park, I do see the new construction on the Cambridge Lumber Company property, and I do like the way those townhouses look. And those townhouses look like they blend in with the rest of the neighborhoods, whereas a, like, a fifty-seven unit building all in one would not. Now, I'm not an architecture major, so I can't say much about what it would take to break down the lot, but in this case, like, what, twelve, fifteen buildings, fifteen smaller buildings in the place of a larger, in the larger one, I think, would, would actually make a lot of sense. So, that's, that's pretty much all I have to say about this.
Thank you. Jeff Myers? And after Jeff, Jeff is Julie Roberts.
My name is Jeff Forrest, one ninety Harvey Sixth Street, excuse me, one ninety-six Harvey Street in Cambridge, and I really appreciate the efforts of a lot of the neighbors to put all this work in. It really shows, uh, true status leadership and partaking in the neighborhood and trying to make it better. But I do want to make sure that everybody understands this is not expressed in the full views of every resident of this neighborhood in Cambridge, who works in Cambridge. They've lived there for several years, and I want to make sure that nobody's looking at, not just the town here, but also the bigger city. One of the biggest issues in Cambridge is housing affordability. One of the easiest ways to achieve that is like that, which would allow even more units coming to the city, supplying the neighborhood. That's something you have to take into account. As far as affordability is needed, easy way to do that. As far as where that goes, the bike path will decide. But the industrial lots, they're larger, bigger lots lend themselves easier to bigger buildings. They will be buildings that allow more density to come in. Also, on the bike path, if you're looking, you're close to neighbor spots, you're close to Elway, you're on the bike path, you're close to Mass Ave. This is the place that can accommodate a lot of that density. We're not going into the neighborhoods and tearing down single-family, two-family, three-family homes. This is the land that's almost ideal for this type of development. In a lot of communities, it's been sought after, it's considered smart development. As far as the stories that are coming up, if you want a lot more students to become lifelong members of the Cambridge community, this is the type of development that needs to create more units, more opportunities for that to happen. All the jobs should be going in around MIT. If these people want to become residents of Cambridge, they have to have someplace to go. If you don't build more housing, prices just go up, and the housing affordability issue doesn't get solved, gets worse. You have to allow more units to come in. And also, I think it's important not to fear change. I know when the fire we handed over here, the bus handed over here, said the neighborhood's being overwhelmed with fifteen hundred residential units. I don't feel that it's being overwhelmed. I feel that it's creating new opportunities for people to come to the neighborhood and participate. Even when you look at those fifteen hundred units that have been talked about, five hundred of those are technically different, they're different neighborhood groups. You know that nine hundred of those units are on the other side of the Elway toward Parkway, in the area where you don't have a lot of existing residential, it's more office space. So, that's ninety percent of those apartments aren't in the main part of both Cambridgeshire that exist in residences, it won't have a direct effect. This is not something that's overwhelming. And also, in terms of the big box and scaling, I agree that it's important, but there are a lot of properties in this part of Cambridge that have more than four units right now. If you want to see something that looks reasonable in terms of a little bit big box, well, the bike path doesn't just start, you start here. Walk towards Davis Square. You can see mid-sized buildings with more than four units, ten units, twenty units that work. Go a little bit down Davis Square, and there are properties that look nice, that work well, the bike paths are valuable, and those residents also enjoy their neighborhoods. So, it can be done well, it can be done nice. Housing affordability is an issue that must be considered in this situation, and don't fear change. It changes difficult, but it's not always bad. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not changing.
Hello, my name is Judith Robertson, I'm the owner of forty-five Hampton Street in Cambridge. I'd like to first concur with Julia on the fifth paragraph here in Dr. McGowan's letter to the, to the, to board. My husband and I went around, spent hours, obtained signatures, and the, we, at some point, we were in people's homes, about twenty minutes to a half hour, explaining the entire request that we were asking them to sign. We also had a map of the area showing exactly where Brookford Street was, so it wasn't a hidden agenda. Everything was out in the open. I just wanted to say that. While I do support the Phillips petition, I don't support it in its entirety, but I do support the premise. The Phillips petition requests the closing of Cottage Park Act. In my opinion, instead of closing Cottage Park Act, why not open Brookford Street? Times have changed, and either all the streets should be open or all the streets should be closed. If all of them, we all share the responsibility of closing the faucet development and have their access to the rest on their street, vinyl core. Who knows, the minority unit hires them to conform to the surrounding resbig neighborhood. Where I do agree totally with Phillips petition is the in, is the in, excuse me, is in the outer steel building. The giant leaning structure that the planning board approved in our resbig community is ludicrous, as you have seen for yourselves from the model produced by the neighborhood. Realistically, it does not conform. It allows for thirty-five big box units on Quiddamore side, not to mention the penciled-in four-two families in a separate, separate development, for a possible probable total of an additional eight units and grant over forty-three units to be absorbed on that end. Adding to this, in the Cottage Park admins, and twenty-five big box units in addition, five two-families storing thirty-five metal faucets having the making, the big box and project that can and will produce seventy-eight minutes in the resbig neighborhood is out of proportion. When a development is represented, constantly reassure the neighbors that they will not see the structure that is behind the landscaping, they are actually finding development, something is wrong with the picture. The structure is four stories on Winemoy side. The landscape is suggested by the Norway maple trees, which is an invasive tree. They grow very fast, they're hodge controlled, they prevent grass from growing and kill our neighborhood maple trees. We need to support once again with the faucet network developers. The question here remains, why do they have to hire the property because it doesn't conform on scale? Now, Cambridge needs your help, once again, as I said, for both present and future residents, a scaled form in density with surrounding community, the faucet site. We need all streets open or all streets closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen...
My name is Cyrus, I still live at one fourteen Hampshire Street. I, I wasn't planning on speaking, I, you know, with some other people, another person signed up, just to say I was here. But one of the things, I don't know, you know, what advice to give you guys as to where to go with this, but one thing to think about as...
Miss Peterson?
I know. But I'll just give you a little bit of perspective that I have, which is I've lived in different parts of Cambridge. You know, I lived in, I used to live on Harvey Street, which is in this area, although it's on the other side of the Linear Park. I've lived down in, near the river, and right now, you know, I live in the corner of Hampshire, Columbia, basically. I feel like these are quite different neighborhoods, and part of the difference is in the scale of development. I feel like where I am now has a number of buildings that have quite a few units. And I think, you know, I think back to when I lived on Harvey Street, when I lived near the river, that, you know, I feel like I knew, I saw more of my neighborhood, basically. You know, sort of, people got out and got bulked in the community, I feel like, and I think that there are trade-offs, like the other commenter said, you know, there's, there are good things about having more units, but, but I think it will change the character of the neighborhood, and so it's, you know, just worth thinking about whether that's the direction you want to go, more or less. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil? Okay. Gary Merle?
Hi. Thanks. My name is Gary Merle, I live in Central Square. I want to address the economic impact that big box development influences on all parts of the city. U North Cambridge folks have presented a wonderful map showing the locations of large-scale projects in north and west Cambridge. There are hundreds, not just dozens, of new high-end C apartments already built and under construction. Big box rental buildings have arguable social costs and benefits. What is undeniable, however, is that these structures will increase the cost of living for, in Cambridge for everybody. I offer the relatively young forty-unit big box just blocks from here on Franklin Street. Each apartment probably rents from within twenty-five hundred dollars per month. You don't get to know your neighbors. That building is appraised at ten million dollars and pays ninety thousand dollars annually in real estate taxes. Forty units means a hundred, maybe a hundred and forty residents, you can kick the numbers around. If just six percent of those residents, which is, six percent of those residents are schoolchildren, we have roughly six percent of our, our population in public schools, at twenty-five thousand dollars per child, the building is already non-negative. Every other municipal service adds some tax burden shed throughout the city. Please keep your eyes on the dollars and cents aspects of these projects.
Paul Dobler? Good evening, councilors. My name's Paul Dobler, I reside at forty-seven McBoone Street. I'd like to take this opportunity this evening to remind you that what the Linear Park represents to the city of Cambridge, as far as the quality of living here, it's very important. We will not have another chance to have another Linear Park. You know, as Mark Twain said, "Land, they're not making any more of it." The traffic, the roadways were laid out in this neighborhood, prior it was farmland, and the ratio of people to automobiles was much smaller. It is currently a non-functioning, non-functional traffic system. Adding higher density would add to that. I think if, you know, we look at a similar piece of land adjacent to this place, or just on the other side of the bicycle path, which is Cambridge Lumber Site, I think that in itself is proof that the site can be developed at a profit with just twenty-two units. The setbacks, the idea of considering bicycle paths aside yards is ridiculous. To have a setback of just eight feet, that is less height than one story of a building. So, if you think about... So if you think about placing a three- or four-story building, not including the roof equipment, up against a bicycle path, this creates an alleyway, a space that's a narrow, confined alleyway. And I think that we should preserve our open space, encourage larger setback, and I think we should pass it into law, that we have a greater setback than eight feet from the bicycle path. We have buildings that are there previously from when it was a railroad track, and some do not meet that requirement, but they are small-scale buildings. You know, lastly, I'd like to say the proposed building is huge. It reminds me of a skyscraper on its lane outside. A gentleman earlier remarked that it is important to encourage higher density here in the city. I would argue that what we currently have, that is two- and three- and four-family buildings close together, is high density. And is sufficient. You do not need a big-box building. Thank you.
Uh, gentlemen, please.
Hello, my name is Valerie Livingston, and like many others this evening, I was not prepared to speak. I thought I was just signing up. However, I will take this opportunity. I occupy six-eight Holden Street, and it's clear even to me, who doesn't see very well, that the proposed development is tremendously unscaled with the existing neighborhood. And in its current form would do, I think, more to fracture the neighborhood than to bring it together. You folks have done an extraordinary job in putting together this presentation. You've done an awful lot of work, and there are clearly a lot of talented people in this room. I think there must be a way to announce the demand for housing with the need for green space and the necessity for safety. I don't necessarily think that developments of this sort are the way to make that happen. And I think that it is clear that there are people in this room that are willing to wait to work together to find an alternative solution that is a win for everyone, attractive to the neighborhood, and attractive for the developers. And I thank you very much for listening. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you.
I'm Anan Metta in one-oh-two Berkshire Street. So that's a little bit in East Cambridge, different neighborhood. But as Michael was talking, I was imagining one of these big-box type buildings in my neighborhood, and it would be very out of place. It would change the nature of the area. And I think the statute that says that buildings should match the form of the neighborhood is something that is important. And I think if the council can follow what's being done here, or what we want to do here, it sets the precedence for the whole city that we do want to maintain the nature of a lot of these neighborhoods. A lot of the neighborhoods are well delineated, so it's fairly easy to tell where bigger construction fits and where it doesn't. Where I am, one block over is Cardinal Mederos, and then there's a railroad tracks that separates Fulkerson. So one neighborhood to the other is easy to distinguish, and keeping the nature of certain areas distinct from others is something I think the zoning board can do. Thank you.
Carmen Phillips?
I'm sorry, I think Jason. Is it all right if my daughter speaks as well? She has a very, very short statement.
Absolutely.
You should look up at Mr. Mark. You should say hi and tell him what your name is.
Hi, my, my name is Ally. And we really want to save the community garden, and we want people to help us, save us, and help us save the community garden.
Thank you.
So I'm Carmen Phillips. I am, in fact, the spouse of the Phillips petition, and I was the second signer on the petition, or maybe the first. Anyways, I'm here because I would like to speak specifically about the garden aspect of this. Minka, sorry, Councilor Rosicom knows what a huge advocate I am, not only for green space, but gardening in the community. Part of why I fell in love with my house and part of the reason why I bought it was the tremendous garden that was in my backyard. In the eight years that we've lived here, and even with the three years that the garden has been out of commission, I have watched how the garden has transformed my perception of community. I came from a Midwestern community where community happened, but when you move to the big city, it is very, very easy to get lost and to not find a place. And the garden helped my neighbors find a place. My eighty-year-old Greek neighbors across the street would love to be here, but they don't speak any English, but they were gardeners in that garden for twenty years, and they would be here if they could. And there's numerous moms of immigrants who, they brought their moms here to help them raise their kids, and they've gardened in that garden too. And all of them don't speak English as well. So I am really glad that a part of this petition supports an attempt to keep a garden in this neighborhood. And even if it doesn't remain on the site of the original garden, obviously, I love that, I think that it's just really, really important. So if we can incentivize Mr. Fawcett and use the carrot and not the stick, that would be wonderful. I think that Mr. Fawcett is a man who is generous when he wants to be, and so if we can find a way to make him want to be generous, that would make me very, very happy. So thanks very, very much, you guys, for honoring us by being here and looking at this petition with us. And please, help us do a wonderful, wonderful thing for our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't really prepared to speak either.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the only amount of truth you'll ever hear from me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the audience committee. My name is James Rafferty, Attorney with Law Offices at one-thirty Bishop Bell in Cambridge. And I represent the property owner, the Fawcett property. Robert Fawcett is here today. And I have long become accustomed to not being popular, so I do want to recognize what is certainly an admirable civic ethic on the part of neighbors who care about their community. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Phillips a favor?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to put up the slide you have of the site plan that was approved last night by the planning board?
I suppose it would be a bad fix to say no.
You wouldn't say. The petition I recognize is a well-intended effort to perhaps affect an outcome for a neighborhood that some people see as appropriate. I just want to draw a couple of things to the council's attention. First is where we find ourselves in the process. We went through a very lengthy rezoning process, the refiling of the Bishop petition, I believe, twice, an attempt to engage and see if we could reach compromise over the life of those negotiations. And at the end, the message was clear. We want Bishop, we want Bishop as written. The city council recognized that, and they adopted the Bishop petition. The property owner then went back and reexamined opportunities to develop this site. Let us not forget that Special District Two was created by the city council for the express purpose of incentivizing housing in these transition zones. This petition, the Phillips petition, is really bad policy, and it's also, frankly, contains unlawful provisions. I'll start with the bad policy. The bad policy really stems from the fact that a property owner has relied upon the actions of the city council and the effort associated with the Bishop petition to put forth a project to the planning board. What you see before you in that slide is not the plan that was originally submitted by the property owner. The property owner submitted a different plan to the planning board and was challenged to return with something that was more contextual. And what you see there is the response to that, the creation of five townhouses on the cottage park end of the site. Each of those townhouses contains three bedrooms, by the way. They're intended to be rental. That's not a form of housing that's particularly available in the rental market right now. If you look at the language of Special District Two, one of the criteria that the planning board is directed to is to, in acting upon applications for multifamily special permits, the planning board is, it says seventeen-point-four-three, that special attention should be paid to three-bedroom units, and the need for three-bedroom units. There are, in this project, seventeen of the fifty-six units, seventeen of the units, sixty-six units are three-bedroom units, and that's specifically called out Special District Two. Now, what's happened since we filed this special permit application, is the Bishop, excuse me, the Phillips petition was filed. And the Phillips petition is a target, a target petition intended to focus on that site. It may claim that it has impacts around Special District Two, but the truth of matter is that don't exist opportunities within Special District Two to really develop anything of this significance. And that's what has made this site a bit of a challenge, because what this is, this is an exceptionally large site by Cambridge standards. It's over three acres large. So when people contrast it to the Cambridge lumber site across the Linear Park, that represents less than a quarter of this site. And there's been a lot of comparison on talk, and tonight we hear this big-box word, and, you know, that's a popular pejorative, but the interesting thing about this building is really what's perhaps unique about it is its length. The density of this building in terms of the number of units, it's, this zoning district has a lot more per growing unit, twenty-five hundred square feet. That's the most restrictive we have in the city. That's what the Res-A zoning district is. So it's not the number of units, and it's been made clear that the Phillips petition doesn't even intend to alter the number of units. But we have a very long site, we have a very large site. So what we have here is a building that is longer than perhaps the average building in Special District Two, but not uniquely long by Cambridge standards. And what we were asked to do in the process that was just completed, the planning board, was to look at ways in which that building could possibly have its form or mass changed. And we, the developer, explored the possibility of splitting the building in two. And there's been much made tonight about the fact that it's being suggested that the building is being hidden. There's no attempt to hide it. The building will stand proud in that location, and it is a building that is very responsive to the dimensional limitations of the Bishop petition. That building is thirty feet, is only allowed to be three, thirty-five feet high within fifty feet of the Linear Park. It's thirty feet high in that zone. Similarly, when we scaled back the building, we took ten units out of the building, the portion of the building closest to the cottage park edge is now three stories. It's thirty feet high, but yet it's derided as a tower. There's a letter from an architect who owns property on Edmond Street, lives in New York, who referred to this building as a tower. This building isn't a tower, this is a three- and four-story building. It contains fifty-six units. There are people who've signed petitions opposing the size of this building that live in buildings of mass add that are nearly adjacent to this, but are comparably sized. What we have here, we have lots of mid-sized buildings in Cambridge. You look at the Radcliffe area, you look at MidCambridge, forty and fifty units. The difference between those buildings and this site is that those units are usually expressed vertically. In this case, we have length, and the length is created by the fact that we have other size limitations. So the problem with the Phillips petition, in addition to the policy implications of serial rezoning and rezoning the site that you've just spent a year discussing and zoning, is it also contains provisions within it that see the municipal authority, the municipality has regarding rezoning. You cannot, the city, any city, cannot rezone by zoning, take away rights that exist under state law. So for instance, if you, and I applaud the reference to this issue to the planning, excuse me, to the solicitor's office, I would encourage you to broaden the solicitor's examination of this. Contained within the petition are zoning language that would restrict access to certain streets. The court order that's been cited here and provided to the council contains case law and statutes that talk about the common law rights of access that property owners have when they invite public ways. It's not within the purview of the zoning authority of the municipality to simply by zoning take those rights away. So in short, you can't close a street by way of zoning. There's a whole different process around controlling streets, and it has to reflect also the property owner's rights of access. So there's a tremendous amount of property rights issues that are affected here. I would only say that the transfer of development rights to me, I think it was a noble attempt to try to perhaps make something happen, but it just doesn't work at all in this location. The concept between a transfer of development rights, and we have it in certain locations in Central Square, is you deliberately want to create a lower-density area, and you identify an area where you put higher density. In this neighborhood, all you're going to be doing is pitting neighbors against neighbors once again, but forgot to close streets and open streets. So if you limit development rights in one area, but tell them that you can put an Elsberg in the site, you're going to quickly find yourself facing the same challenges and even more so. And finally, the issues, the issues really that have become paramount here under any analysis and discussion is traffic. And it is a significant issue. The traffic studies really address a number of issues. There are mitigation measures contained in the special permit. But changing the form here, what we'd be doing here in the Phillips petition would be creating a new standard that doesn't exist anywhere else in the city in terms of townhouse development. So if you had some property, Elsberg and Special Two, or anywhere else in North Cambridge, where you could build a six-unit townhouse development, you could do that. In fact, you could do that anywhere in Cambridge. But in the Special District Two, under the Phillips petition, you couldn't do that. Now, the question when you analyze a zoning petition is, why would we take, or as a policy matter, why would we apply a restriction in a certain district different than we do unilaterally across the city and in particular in the inviting district? So it's those constraints that I know, I can't go more further.
I want to clarify that I am allowing, being generous with the time, because this is the property, the affected property owner's representative, and we've been very generous with the petition or so. Please.
Thank you. And I have a strong sense I'm probably the only person speaking at the council property owner. And I will conclude. And I have spent a great deal of time, this is my third night in a row with these neighbors, and we do understand each other, I think. We share an interest in the success here. They have a very personal and legitimate interest in seeing something here that works well. I have to say, when you look at the amount of open space on this site, a forty percent requirement, which again is higher, the only higher district is fifty percent in the Res-A district, it's forty percent for B. This project was evaluated and ultimately approved last evening, but the Phillips petition contains components that are unlawful in terms of street access, inconsistent with the city zoning laws as it treats townhouse development throughout the rest of the city, and also a direct assault on the property owner's rights at this location. It is on its face reversed by zoning. So for all those reasons, I would urge you to seek counsel from the solicitor's office on all aspects of the petition and not to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary Demetri?
Can I offer a technical clarification to a lot of Harvard's?
Go ahead. We usually don't let people speak twice.
I'm not going to rebut any points. I just wanted to feel, talking to a lot of Harvard's points have been useful for you. The language where we close a street was copied from Special District Three, where Harvey Street is closed, to a racist lot. And the concept of having small townhouses is also, limited number of units in a building is also present in Special District Fourteen. So these are not precedents, I'm not saying precedents here. And then the other thing which I think staff bang me up on is, I don't believe you can deal with the Brookford Street opening question here, because either it's not a zoning issue at all, or it would require a new petition to be re-advertised, because that is changing the scope of the petition dramatically. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gary Demetric. I live at twenty-four forty Mass Ave, and I'm also the president of the Association of Cambridge Neighborhoods. I live at twenty-four forty Mass Ave, a forty-two-unit condominium building. It's the biggest building that's been built in the neighborhood in quite some time. It was built approximately the same time, about six years ago, as... as Trolley Square, which is the authority unit, open on the other side of Madison Ave. Across on the other side of the MBTA Car Barn is the biggest building in the neighborhood. It was built in the seventies, it's about eight stories high, something like that. The building that's being proposed for this lot in Special District Two is fifty-seven units. My building is forty-two units. That's more than a third larger than my building, more than thirty-three percent larger than the largest building that's been built on Madison Ave in this neighborhood since the nineteen seventies. Now, the zoning ordinance for Special District Two says, "The purpose of Special District Two is," and I quote, "to encourage the establishment of residential uses in the district in a form and density compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood." It doesn't say to encourage, simply to encourage the establishment of residential uses. It says these uses are to be in a form and density compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood. There was some discussion last year, the year before, culminating in the Bishop petition, and we thank the council for passing that, that clarified the density for this area. Now, the question is, what is an appropriate form? We've seen that the proponents first came with a building that was one-hundred-and-forty units. And that was, after the petition was passed, that was no longer possible. Then they returned with a proposal for a sixty-nine-unit building, and now a fifty-seven-unit building. And Mr. Rafferty has said that this has been a very long process for his clients, and it's been years. Meanwhile, on the other side of Linear Park, the developer of Cambridge Lumber has decided that he would build something that is compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood, and is as well under construction, and on the way to being completed, perhaps in a year or something like that, and then being occupied. So I would like the council to take seriously the language of the zoning ordinance that says that these residential uses are to be in a form and a density compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood. We see from the project across the Linear Park in Cambridge Lumber that it's possible to build something like that. The neighbors themselves came up with these models that show, the first one shows sort of larger buildings, and the other one shows smaller buildings. But I think they show the same kind of floor area that's allowed, and approximately the density in terms of number of units. Contrary to what other people have said, you know, the Cambridge Lumber project proves that you can put, you know, this density and this number of units in this size of an area. And it's not reasonable to expect that of a developer because it's already been done. Okay, thank you very much, and thanks to everybody else who came down.
Good evening, councilors, my name is Sylvia Barnes, and I live at one-hundred and sixty Madison Street. I'm here to support my neighbors, the Phillips petition. I have lived in Cambridge for a long time, I won't say how long, because you know that I'm really old. Anyway, I've been in North Cambridge for twenty years. And when I first moved there, there was a lot of open land. And now Harvey Street, the only open land on that street is my yard and the yard next door. There is a many more open land on that street. And there's a lot of overdevelopment in the area. And it was a working-class neighborhood when I moved in. Now the houses are gone for close to a million dollars. So working-class people are not able to move in the neighborhood anymore. So, but that's progress. But, you know, another thing that has to be considered is traffic. You know, I don't know if any of the councilors have ever been on Route Two near Ring Avenue on the corner with this traffic or this gridlock. Cars can't move, emergency vehicles can't get through. And the same thing is, the same thing happens on Madison Ave and Cedar Street. But I just wanted to let you know that I was here to support my neighbors because I believe, as they do, that there's too much development. Not that we're against development, but it should be, you know, in the same kind of form as the neighborhood. And, you know, it's just got away out of hand. So thank you, and I support the Phillips petition, thank you.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Carolyn Meese, I live at fifteen Brookford Street in North Cambridge. I just wanted to comment, I thought Mr. Phillips' attempt to, made an admirable attempt to address issues not dealt with in prior petitions. And, but I guess he's run into some snags about things that he's not allowed to do in the petition. But maybe these things can be worked out. But he cited the community garden and the dance relocation of the dance studio, things that were important to the neighborhood that haven't been dealt with yet. My particular concern is Brookford Street. My husband filed the petition years ago when Fawcett opened the end of our street, opened the fire gates, and took it to court. And after two years, we had a decision to keep Brookford Street closed. Further to that, on October eighteen, nineteen eighty-two, it was ordered by the city council that the city manager be, and hereby is requested, to instruct the director of traffic and parking to reaffirm to this city council that Brookford Street, which is currently a dead-end street, will remain as one. The fact is, Brookford Street has never been open to residential and commercial traffic, through traffic, never. And Beth Courtney, who was at the planning board meeting last night, who's lived there for thirty-five or thirty-six years, reaffirmed that. And in the court case, both the woman next door to me, Dear Soul, was eighty-some years old, and she could remember how they hoisted the ice and coal in buckets from atop the mound of dirt down to waiting vehicles below. She knew that Brookford Street had never been opened. In the petition, the last petition, it doesn't have a name, but regarding thirty-three Cottage Park Avenue, it talks about reopening, reopening Brookford Street. It has never been open. I wanted to clarify that. And Bob McGowan's memo, excuse me, says that at the planning board meeting, it was also stated that opening Brookford Street would have little impact on the traffic conditions to and from the development. It also mentioned that opening it would only decrease traffic slightly. So I think that there's no reason to deal further with Brookford Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ashley Adler. I live at forty-nine Madison Ave in the North Cambridge neighborhood. And when we first moved there about three or four years ago, it was intended to be a one-year kind of thing. We had a tendency at will, we thought, great, we can leave whenever we want. And we just never did. It turns out that it's a really great neighborhood, full of really amazing people. And when I think about how I got to know those people, it's, you know, people sitting on their front porches in the evenings. It's people out in their gardens doing yard work. It's people playing on the sidewalk, drawing with chalk with their children. It's people riding bikes down relatively quiet streets, people walking their dogs. And I don't see people living in this building doing any of those things. I don't know how they could. I don't think there are any porches. I don't think they have any gardens to do yard work in. Probably not dog-friendly. I don't think they really have any sidewalks to draw with chalk on. So I just don't know how these people can become part of our neighborhood. And I think that's really sad and a missed opportunity. And I understand about needing affordable housing. Turns out our tendency at will is getting terminated. So I would like some affordable housing in our neighborhood. And it's frustrating, it's a little bit heartbreaking because I don't want to leave. But there's no way I would live in a building like this, no matter what the price was. It's just not a neighborhood-type of building. It's an isolating, removed, insulated building. It's just the fact that talking about hiding it with trees and creating this buffer, it makes me think they're actually hiding the building. So what is there to hide? It's that it's not really part of this community. And I believe that apparently, at least one of the members of the planning board felt that although they did not agree with this building being here, and they didn't think it was the right thing to do, they felt obligated to approve it because it did meet the criteria for the current ordinance. And I think by passing this zoning petition to amend the ordinance, it opens it up to a better project that can actually fit in our neighborhood and help people become good neighbors to the existing neighbors and help the existing neighbors get to know these new people who we are happy to have in our neighborhood. Just, you know, we don't want them to be anonymous. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles Teague, twenty-three Edmonds Street. Mike did a wonderful job of explaining the deficiencies in the Bishop petition. And you just have to understand the timeline is that Cambridge Lumber was refusing to come down in the number of units, and it's over and over and over again. And the time was expiring. And because of the Bishop petition and because of the planning board working together, it went from twenty-nine units to twenty. And it's the development that everybody here likes today. So it did do good things, but, you know, we can see that we trusted the language of the ordinance again. And Attorney Rafferty referred to consistency in the zoning ordinance. If any, I haven't seen consistency typically, so I'm not sure about that. What I do see that would be consistent with this building would be, I passed out a map, and this building is quite consistent with the L-Wise development. It's a large, multi-unit building, it's a rental building. And the last place it belongs is deeply embedded in our neighborhood, next to a park. It just, it just doesn't fit. And the true sadness, and I'm not sure that there's anything to be done about it, is that it kills three neighborhood institutions, all of us. Kills the community garden, kills the dance studio, and Mike left out the Moreno Clinic. Because they park right next to me, I see them every morning. When they went to get a sign, we asked for conditions on the variance, and we didn't get any of them, and they did every one of them. They created a loading zone, they turned off the lights, they did everything. And I know so many of my friends and friends' wives, they go there. And they're going to lose, they lose, to my count, they park over at least thirty cars in the Fawcett parking. They cannot just lose the parking for all the employees. I've spent hours and hours in the C-Two process with the Central Square Advisory Committee, over and over again. Everything that we're losing is what they're trying to create eight in these planned communities around the city. We already have it in this one development. Zap, and what do we get? We get something that's totally wrong. You know, if we got, if we got something that was really, really nice, well, that would be, it would still be sad. But to destroy three neighborhood institutions, all of us, and get this, that's why everybody's here, or at least some people. So the last, the last thing is, for years now, I've suggested a one-way loop of Tyler, come inbound on Tyler, and outbound on Edmonds, as the solution. What I would ask the council to do is to get from traffic and parking, whether they're going to remove parking from Cottage Park and Edmonds. We all have seen photographs over and over again, I did several presentations. And we know the narrowness of these streets. And to leave them two-way, you're going to have to be taking away parking. So I would like to get an honest assessment from traffic and parking, what's happening off-site. We've only very carefully looked on-site here. And that's disingenuous. We have to actually be told now what's going to happen to our streets. Thanks a lot.
So that finishes up the list of all those who have signed. Who has not spoken and wishes to speak? Okay, so we have four people that wish to speak. Bill, come on up.
I won't be long if I've not shut up before I speak, which last night they told me to shut up and not talk to them.
You won't be told that?
That's it. My name is Bill Fox, and I lived at Cottage Park Avenue in Cambridge for sixty years. I bought there, it's empty fast. But what I wanted to say to that is, I'm not going to bore people anymore. I know we're all getting tired, we'll go home. And I was just reading the court order, which I've brought it up and brought it up, and nobody wants to read the court order for Cottage Park and Edmonds Street. It's one order for two streets. But anyway, I just read it, and I found this sentence, and I said, I thought you might want to listen. "The city has a duty, as it deems necessary, for the public's safety and convenience." That's what the judge wrote, it said in his order. And he ordered the city to protect, for the protection of what they ordered. And this is just the first in there, that the city has a, the city has a duty, as it deems necessary, for the public's safety and convenience. We do need safety, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dee Thomas Flynn, a lifetime resident of Madison Ave. I applaud the effort of Mike on this petition. But I can't go with all of it. The smaller buildings, the setback from Linear Park, which was done last night, and the closing of Cottage Park. We need more streets open and not more closed. And to address that, I sent to each one of you council members a packet on Monday, which had two-hundred-and-forty signatures on it. Did you all receive it? Or is it in junk mail? I hand-delivered it, I hand-delivered it and put it in your box. Okay. And the only way I could get it here was to put it in as an, in the ordinance committee meeting. But anyway, we went out and gathered those signatures based on the items that the planning board stated in their first meeting with us. Line by line, they were the ones that were for opening Brookford Street because it was more balanced on the traffic. They were the ones that asked the proponents of the developments to come back with more ideas. They asked them to go to the fire department, they asked them to go to the traffic department. And all of a sudden, when we go to the meeting, the follow-up meeting last night, it's like they didn't hear any responses from anyone. They also read that petition, two hundred and forty people. And that was only to show them how the neighborhood was supporting what they had suggested. And then we come down to, wow, we can't do this. They couldn't even choose a fence last night. It was recommended that the fence be four foot tall. No, it has to be six feet. It has to be covered with green. And someone said earlier about hiding the project. That's certainly what they're trying to do from Leno Park. And as far as the opening on Whittymore and Magoon, that wouldn't be there if they didn't buy an adjoining piece of land. Let's see this faucet development. If they didn't buy the adjoining piece of land, how would they have entrance and exits? We're gonna go back to the one entrance on Tyler Court. The other one is, if they're talking about Brookford being closed for non-use, the Whittymore-Magoon Street entrance was blocked by a building that's been torn down, and the building was there for more than two hundred years because the greenhouse never had access to the faucet property. So that petition is what the neighborhood is looking to try to solve, that everybody in the neighborhood, almost everybody in the neighborhood, signed. I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Robertson, five-five Magoon Street, Cambridge. I wanted to... On Monday night, we met with the faucets, and the faucet was kind enough to ask me to talk on fire safety. And I started to talk about fire safety, and I said, fire is a weird thing because you have a group of people try to leave the building, and you have a group of people trying to come in to the site. That would be the police and fire. And I was interrupted then by Mr. Rafferty, and it was not a... He didn't really do it on purpose. It was a kind of meeting that everybody was... It was unruly a little bit. It got out of hand. So it wasn't Mr. Rafferty's fault, but I just decided to sit down and not speak about fire safety. When I was about twenty-five years old, I worked for Morris Gordon, at that time the largest property owner in New England. And my father-in-law, God rest his soul, was a great man, and he worked for Morris. And he was in charge of construction for Morris Gordon. So my wife and I had, I think we were expecting our fourth child, and I was like twenty-five, twenty-six years old. I needed a sideline, so he invited me onto the construction crew to work as an electrician and hopefully get my license and blah, blah, blah. But I didn't really, you know, I didn't want to do that. I had a good job at MIT, and I wanted to stay there at MIT. But I did work, and on the day of, I think it was in seventy-two, the day that the Vendome Fire broke out, I was working, and my father-in-law thought I was working at the Vendome because Morris owned the Vendome, and he also owned the Terrain. I was supposed to go to the Vendome, but I went to the Terrain to work, the Terrain Hotel. And it was the worst day of my life because, like I said, I lost nine firemen and eight injured. And I think my father-in-law might have thought that I was in the debris. But I had left work at two o'clock and went home. So fire is a thing that I fear, and I hope you can understand that. And I get nervous when I think about fire. And when I see this plan, I think that, I really think that these buildings should be built on what I call, in my day, I'm over the dirt, but we call them chapter ninety streets. And they had all the infrastructure. They had heavy water mains. They had wide streets. And the police and fire could pull up in front of the building and fight the fire with adequate room. So when I look at this building, I say, wow. If people are leaving the site, and I said the other night, they will get in their cars and leave if it's traumatic enough. There are some people, we saw at the end of Marathon, we saw people help, and we saw people run away. That's because not one of us looks alike unless we're identical twins, and we all think differently. So some of us are caregivers. The caregivers go help. Other people are just afraid of a bomb, and they run away. So some people will leave, some people will stay. But you have all this surface parking here. And the head of the planning board last night said something like, "We think the fire department will be able to move a fire truck around the building." Come on. We can't take a chance on this. This building is two hundred and sixty-five feet long, wood-stick construction. You can't do it. You just can't, in good conscience, do it because it's dangerous. Now, here's another issue. Can I ask the councillors how many walked around the site? Show of hands, have been walked around?
They all have.
They all have. Okay. Their big influence in the bishop petition was because they went to the site and they walked around. And I think they had the same feeling that I have, that the building, a big box, doesn't really belong there. And I said to Mayor Maier at the time, I said, "We don't want any black eyes on this." I don't know if you remember me saying that to you, Mr. Maier, Mayor Maier? Right at the corner of Magoon and Whittymore. And you came up with the idea of the townhouses. That's a great idea. You are a leader. You are the best. The whole place should be townhouses, so if there is a fire, you're gonna fight them one-on-one, not fifty-seven-on-one. So just let me finish. The council gave a nine-to-zero vote. You know, kind of against. I know it was for the bishop, which was for downsizing, but still, the surroundings aren't conducive for the building. And last night, they gave us a seven-to-zero in favor. Something's wrong in Disney World.
Good evening. I'm Ollie before you all. Hi, my name is Robert Lee Abomen, and I live at one-ninety-six Harvey Street. I moved to this community seven years ago and completely fell in love with it. And I have a little secret. I am a renter. And one day, my husband and I will become homeowners, and hopefully in the North Cambridge area. But I want to reach out to my neighbors, as well as the city council, because I think it's very dangerous to start using language like them and those people as it relates to people coming into the neighborhood. It really sends a message of being exclusive. And the reason I fell in love with the city of Cambridge is because it was a welcoming place. Yes, there are things that need to be worked out, but people that want to live in Cambridge, whether they are homeowners or want to rent, should have access. And so I really want to encourage my neighbors, as well as the council, to really be mindful of that as you think about development moving forward. Thank you.
So that completes the list, and it also completes those who raised their hand. Am I correct? All right. So when a motion by Councilor Kelly to close Public Department, all those in favor say aye, those opposed no. The pleasure of the council. It is obvious to me that we are going to have to have a lot more dialogue. So my suggestion is that we leave this matter in committee, that we wait to get responses from the law department, clarifications, and we will schedule another hearing on this after. And it will be... And then looking, Stuart, the planning board is hearing this next week.
It's two weeks, actually, June four.
Oh, June four. So the next ordinance committee meeting will happen after the planning board hears the case. And we have something from them, and we have something from the law department. Mr. Chair? Councilor Kelly?
Looking at the expiration date, this could only be ordained, or to be ordained, at the summer's meeting, which is at the end of July, or some special meeting called after that, which might present problems in getting people here. I don't know how that impacts the schedules of anyone, but I think we need to be aware of that.
Doily noted. Okay, if there is a motion to adjourn, then... Counselor, end this.
Yes, thank you. So I know that we will have further discussion, so I won't wax away on this. But I did want to ask if we could also, for the planning board meeting, have a... In time for the planning board meeting, to have them also have a plan from the traffic department about how closing this street would impact the flow in the whole area, just to sort of get all of the information on the table. Does that make sense?
I'm not a hundred percent sure that, looking at you, Stuart, whether they will entertain...
Might make the request to characterize rather than a plan. I mean, they looked at the serial party, didn't spoke to a particular...
This is the video.
Requested to characterize the street or post what...
But what would be impact on the flow? That's the question. And then another thing came up, which probably doesn't fit the... I mean, this is a change to the SD district, so anything that's happening in there is something that we would want to consider. For instance, one comment that was made is maybe Tyler Court should be one-way. I mean, Edmond and Tyler should be one-way instead of two-way because it is, as has been pointed out, you know, another piece of the bottom line. This is such an incredible little neighborhood pushed up against... You know, it's really bounded on three sides. It's a little triangle. And I think anything that we can do to help preserve the intent of the bishop petition is worth doing. I was at the planning board last night, and they went step by step through all the criteria for fulfilling the special permit. And I didn't know whether it was because there were new members on the planning board and they were, you know, sort of educating them about what the status was, but I personally found it very fascinating. But I have to say, this line has been repeated about keeping with the form and density of the current residential neighborhood. You know, I would have just come up with an entirely different interpretation. And yet, as they went through the checklist, they all said, yes, this seems like the same as the residential neighborhood in the bus. So I think this petition tries to really adhere to the initial intent that we all agreed that the bishop petition was what we agreed to. And form and density are tricky things to define, but it's sort of like, you know, you know it when you see it. And what I saw in the planning board presentation last night, the Mark Fors Watson drawings did not feel like the same as the residential neighborhood in the bus. I just have one more comment that I want to make because it was really very useful. Mark Fors Watson, the architect, went through many slides that were sort of a three-dimensional sketch rendering of what it would look like as you were going down Cottage Park or Edmond. And what it would feel like as you were approaching this. And you see in the side there, they have those five new townhouses. And, you know, it's just, you should have drawn into the down Edmond Street, into this little neighborhood, and he did a beautiful job of making it feel like that was happening. And then boom, there was this big building there. So it would have destroyed that whole intent as you were drawing down into this sweet little spot right against the Leno Park. So I'm glad that we're gonna continue discussing this. So I also wanted to get a sense from the city clerk, the checklist that she has for what we would like in the law department to look into. Harvey?
We'll listen to the panel here in the committee report, and we're gonna try to have that committee report for a week from Monday.
You can't read right now, but you can just make sure it's completed.
She's gonna have to back and go through all of the minutes that she has. I think what we have talked about is we will get clarification on the serial nature of the zoning. We would get on Councilor Kelly's first comment, which was about the... Come on, now.
There's so many comments I forgot about.
I think it's time. Yeah, there was a... It was about the reviving of the petition.
There's impact on the camera.
I think what we're looking for is a review from the law department about the legalities of the petition and issues that were brought up in the petition today. So we will be asking, but I know that CDD will be also meeting with the law department to go over it.
Because then they will get, you will give documents to the law department to show that there was, this is not precedent-setting language, that it already exists in the city ordinance.
We will be asking, we will not be telling the law department. We're asking. Mr. Chair? Counselor?
I have a comment, which is, there was some talk about this being a district to incentivize zoning. I think that reflects a very old notion of Cambridge. Property values are so high here that the need for us to incentivize much by zoning is a relic. And I think to some extent, we're seeing that today in what old zoning gives us in terms of our options. And also, I have a question. What we have sort of are two dueling petitions. A petition that resulted in the granting of a permit and a petition that we're actually looking at now. And it's hard to talk about the one without understanding the impacts of the other. So I would be interested in finding out what the parking impacts of the proposal that we're looking at, the one that got granted yesterday, what that is likely to be on neighboring streets because there is, I think, some valid fear that Edmond and Cottage Park may wind up losing on-street parking. And I understand that's a decision that traffic and parking can make without our input, but I would be... I would ask them to tell us what they think would happen off of this site in terms of parking.
I'm looking at the CDD staff that I know are taking copies of notes. Okay, on a motion to adjourn in the meeting, I want to thank you all for being here. I know that this is, it doesn't seem like very long ago that many of you were here, but here we are, almost at the same time of year, I believe. A little bit later in the year. But with that, a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye, those opposed no, committee adjourned.